Computer, phone, smartphone, or tablet and wish to participate via the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 884-419-8371. If you would like to join by phone, the number is 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is...
I just announced to the booth, there's no sound.
Oh.
Sorry. There's no sound from the booth?
Yeah, hold on one second, please.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Yeah, we wouldn't want anybody back home to miss this blurb.
I know.
Okay.
We'll come to find out that the person who's wrote in about his TV is on mute.
Funny.
Although I was not up.
Yeah, I pre-quit everything once and as it should be, as far as I can tell.
Okay. Are you getting, I mean, don't you get a loop back?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, all right.
She said hers wasn't on mute.
Is still an issue, let me know and I'll try to be certain.
Okay.
It's back on now.
I heard it just came on.
Yeah, it just came back on.
That's sister. There we go. Set to proceed. For fees, the budgeted amount is $176,052. As of September 30th, we collected $56,547, or 32% of the estimate. Licenses and permits, the budgeted amount is $331,188. We've received $101,990, or 31% of that estimate. Rollback taxes, we do not typically budget for that, but we did receive a payment in the amount of $6,109. Departmental revenue other, which is our ambulance receipts, the budgeted amount is And we have received $75,289 of that estimate, or 29%. Investment income, the budget is $25,000. We've received $11,916, or 48% of the estimate. Departmental revenue cemeteries, the budgeted amount is $4,100. We've received $900, which is 22% of the estimate. Motor vehicle excise, which is the largest local receipt, the budgeted amount is $1,771,640. To date, we've received $229,993, or 13% of that estimate. The majority of those revenues will be realized in the third quarter and will be reported at that time. Special assessments, the budgeted amount is $11,844. We've received $3,974, which is 36% of the estimate. Penalties and interest, the budget is $200,000. We've received $52,397, 26% of the estimate. And miscellaneous nonrecurring, $215,699 is the budget. $96065 is what we have received, and that's equal to 45% of the estimate. So overall, our local receipt, the budgeted amount, was $3168,991, and we've received 22% of that estimate through September 30th. Taxes, based on the votes from the May 7th annual town meeting, the total FY '23 tax levy net of our overlay is $30,548,750. We have collected $7,854,266, or 26% of that estimate. And at the close of September, we had also received $33,225 in tax lien revenue. State aid, the cherry sheet estimate based on the governor's proposed budget, which was used at the annual town meeting in May, was $10,258,395. To date, we have received $2,682,223, or 26% of that estimate. On the expenditure side, the total budgeted expenditures were $47,544,278. And as of September 30th, we had actually expended $12,789,628, or 27% of that estimate. All the expenditures as of September 30th appear to be at the level that they should be at at that point in the fiscal year, and I just provided you with a summary by department of where each budget is as of September 30th, 2022.
I will open it up to, first of all, thank you for your informative and brief recap of Q1. I will open it up to the board if anybody has any questions for the Finance Director.
I have none, same, none.
I just have one curiosity question. So, you know, obviously, we expect that the tax, the real estate tax, would be at about 25% since it's quarterly, but in the local receipts and everything, it seems like things are higher than most things. There were a few that were under 20, 25, but a lot of them were over. Is that just how the payments go?
Um, let me just take a quick peek here.
They weren't really that much higher.
No, no, but I mean, they were in the 30s.
As a percentage, it was 21.93% for local.
Of the overall local receipt estimate. So I think that certain things happen at certain times.
That's because of the excise tax. It's only lower because the excise tax, which you said, when you lowered it, generally comes in at Q3. But everything else is 44, 33, you know, there's a couple that were 47, 29, 30s. So I just was wondering, I mean, if that's just the way it goes, I mean.
Well, I think that's just the way that it goes, in that we'll probably see things even out more as we get further into the fiscal year.
Okay.
Other than motor vehicle excise, which we get the big commitment of that in February of '23, so we'll start to see those revenues come in at that point.
And that's, of course, the biggest ticket item in local revenue, right?
And I always say, you need to be conservative with your revenue estimates because they're elastic revenues and you never know whether you're going to collect them or not. So it's better to have a positive outcome at the end of the year than to be trying to raise a potential deficit.
Mr. Jeffries, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
Uh, I think, I think, Mr. Alonso, you asked my question, which was about when we would see those, what quarter, the, why am I blanking, is it motor vehicle excise taxes show up in? And so I think the answer there was Q3. And then my other question, which I think you just asked, was if this is a normal trend, and I'm not sure based on the history, if this is normally how we see Q1, but I think Karen answered that with the, her statement about it being a conservative estimate. So, thank you, Mr. Alonso, and thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
I made it through without coughing, that's a big deal.
Let's do, we have 10 minutes, so let's do approval of minutes of October 18th, the 1st, and November 1st, and November 15th. Does everybody read through them?
The answer is yes, but for me.
Yeah, okay.
If there are no requested changes, I would entertain, I mean, does everybody have all of them before?
No, I wasn't at October 18th.
Okay. So, is everybody at the other ones?
Yep.
All right, so let's take the 18th by itself. So I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of October 18th.
I move to accept the minutes of October, for the meeting of October 18th, 2022, as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Ms. Roca?
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And I for myself. I would entertain a motion regarding, and there are no no's because we did a roll call. I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes of November 1st and November 15th of 2022.
If you want. Okay, I'll, I move to accept the minutes of, for the meetings of November 1st and November 15th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Again, any further discussion? Roll call, vote, Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, so they both pass, all right. Warrants. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $59,340,013. Actually, this is payroll deduction, apologize. This is an accounts payable, is this both of them? Yes. Skimping on the rubber bands now? Accounts payable warrant in the amount of $651,569,04. This is a separate payroll for a terminated employee. The amount of $1,256. And last but not least, payroll in the amount of $991,696,03. Any action items? Is the line painting in your report tonight?
There, no, but I can give an update.
Yes, well, this will be, that's all that, let's give it now.
You see the crosswalks and parking spots on Memorial, Main Street, and the newly paved areas down here have been done, but there, the line painting for the center, line painting was supposed to happen last Thursday. No call, no show, again, so there's no update at this time for that.
Okay, well, we... And for those, and for those people who are commenting on public media, I will say that we've had people from all areas of the state say, oh, well, we, you know, I know somebody, I know somebody here, and we've made calls to everywhere. So this is not a Lunenburg issue, this is an everywhere issue of getting, I don't know whether it's supplies, whether it's contractors can't get employees, whether it's a combination of the two, but it's not for lack of trying from the DPW of getting this done, so, and believe me, we are painfully aware that this is still needing to be done. I've, I've brought it up several times, several other members of the board have, as well as residents, so we are really aware of the problem. Do we have anything that's quick? I'm guessing not.
My update on Town Manager Goals is really quick because there's not much to report. The culture survey, we engaged services with the company, and we had our first kickoff meeting just to kind of overview and what next steps are that the Assistant Town Manager and I will need to do before a survey gets sent out. So there's, it's a lot of uploading of all data and reviewing videos and such to get it going, so.
Okay. Well, we can try, touch on, Mr. Jeffries, you are unmuted, so again, if you feel free to chime in at any point, you don't have to wait, because I'm trying to, not looking everywhere, so. I think we'll go to the Select Board Goals. So does anybody have anything new on Objective 1, which is the 30 School Street?
Well, I had a question for the, I had a question for the Town Manager.
Yes.
So on the, well, that's really good news to hear about the engagement with the company. Do you have one, my statement, if there, you know, if the results of the climate survey are that, you know, there's opportunities for improvement, you know, some things may require cost or money, so my comment is just that, you know, I, I hope that there's some flexibility in the budgeting process, so that way, if there's an opportunity that can be identified, that needs to be funded, that that makes it into the budget, and that way, you know, even if this process happens in the springtime, that there's not a, that there's not like a year-long delay before funds can be, can be committed. So the question is, do you have at this point kind of an estimated timeframe for when you expect to be able to roll that survey out?
Not ultimately, I hope to get the survey out before the end of the calendar year, but.
Oh, okay. So you're aiming for December?
That's my goal, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Goal within a goal.
Goal within a goal.
Okay. So for our, our first goal was 30 School Street, are we at the same position, we're still waiting for, is, um, his name is escaping me. Mr. Dunne, thank you. Is he still working on that?
Yep, I've been, that is, well, touched on in my report, but I have been corresponding back and forth because the, the facilities director was the point of contact before, so I've taken over that. So I have been working with him on different questions in the bid specifications and hope to have something by Monday.
Okay. On Objective 2, which is the means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption, I am happy to report that Mr. Franco and I, who serves with me on this ad hoc committee, met and finalized what we would like to propose as the framework. I'm hoping, we are hoping that it's available for next meeting so that everybody can review it, but it is at long last going to be an actual starting, well, we've already started, but it'll be the first distributed framework that we can discuss, that this board can discuss, as well as the, the town at large, and then we'll be scheduling a meeting with the Town Manager, the Finance Director, the Board of Ass, our Principal Assessor, and a member of the Board of Assessors to review. So it is still our intention, very strong intention, that this will be on the 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant. Objective 3 is reviewing the bylaws. We have done many of these already, and I know that we were intentionally on a pause while we got through some of the things we went through, and I know the Chair intends to pick up on that at the New Year. So that is the review of the Board's objectives or goals. Anything else to add from anybody? Okay. So, at 7:30, we have a joint interview and appointment with the Select Board and the Planning Board. To, for the Planning Board member, the interviewee is Timothy Wilsmer of 762 Northfield Road. So if Mr. W, if Mr. Wilmers here, okay, if you would come up to the podium and, let me just get the, your Talent Bank form first. your talent bank form first. Okay, so if you would introduce yourself and, you know, tell us a little bit about you and what you do and why you want to be, or what attracted you to the planning board?
Yeah, um, as, my name's Tim Wilsmer, 762 Northfield Road. Um, I work as an engineer for Mastot, primarily at the moment doing materials engineering. Before, I was with the Right-Away Department. I think that a lot of the skills I have from there would translate over nicely to the planning board, and it feels like a good way to be involved in the community at large. That's, that's basically my spiel.
Excellent. Um, have you attended any of their meetings or?
Um, just the one last week for, you know, their discussion willingness to appoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
And did they interview you there?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Do we, do we have member, I mean, I see we have one member of the planning board. Do we have two members?
Yeah, we have three.
Three.
All right, three members of the planning board, okay. Um, so I'll open it up for the, the board first to, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Wilsmer.
How long have you lived in Lunenburg?
Uh, a little over five years now.
Yeah, because I live on Northfield too. I, I.
Oh, okay.
I've looked where you live though, so I wanted to see where, I think you bought Kimball House, perhaps?
Um, just behind the tree farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's nice that you want to serve in Lunenburg. Have you been watching the meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it better with sound or without sound?
Yeah.
Oh, it's supposed to depend.
Wish me to take an ad hoc poll tonight.
Is it better with coffee?
Yeah. Everything's better with coffee.
In pajamas.
Mr. Dwyer?
Um, I don't have any, uh, questions for you. Um, as, as an engineer myself, uh, I'm sorry that you're an engineer. Uh, but thank you for stepping forward to, to serve the town. It's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's all I want to say too, is thank you very much for stepping up. You know, we, the, the town runs on, you know, these, these boards run on volunteers like yourself, so, thank you, and certainly it looks like your, your background is relevant, so appreciate your stepping up.
Thank you.
Have you ever served on any board, anywhere?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Ooh, you're so lucky.
And you are aware that this position is just until the annual town election, and I am, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, would you be running?
Um, that would be my anticipation. Um, yeah.
I would open it up to the planning board. If they, planning board members have any questions that they haven't already asked, or any commentary they'd like to give, I see Mr. Allison making his way to the microphone.
Hi, yes, Matt Allison, uh, planning board chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before you go, see, this is what happens. Mr. Jeffries, this is what happens when you have people on Zoom and you're not, I apologize. Mr. Jeffries, you're, you're.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Alonso, and, and thank you, Timothy, for coming forward. You know, I just want to offer some comments to you, you know, my first involvement in the town was serving on the, on the planning board, um, and so, you know, I expect that you'll be appointed tonight, but I just want to offer some positive words, um, that, you know, the, the staff that you'll be working with, Adam, I have a lot of respect for Adam. Adam is definitely a, a consummate professional, very knowledgeable, um, and so, you know, he's, he, he will be a really good resource for you. You know, if you have any questions, also, I see you're standing next to Mr. Allison, uh, who's a friend of mine, and certainly, you know, he, he also is a great resource. And then Marjorie, um, who I personally really like a lot, uh, she's, she also has been in this, uh, serving our community for over 20 years and has a lot of knowledge and experience. So, you know, one of the good things I think about joining the planning board in particular is that you have a lot of really good staff support, um, and then also a really good team to work with. So thank you for stepping forward to volunteer, and we look forward to your service to our community.
Thank you.
And again, apologies. I, I come from a big family, which is if, if I was missed getting attention, I would just shout out, so. But obviously, Mr. Jeffries is way too polite for that, so I, I, again, I apologize, Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Allison?
No problem. Uh, again, Matthew Allison, Chair of Planning Board. Uh, we did meet with, uh, the applicant last week, and we did express interest in it, but we didn't take an official vote. So at 7:36, I'll call our planning board meeting to order. Uh, we do have a call, and, um, so we.
Does anybody from your board have any questions for the applicant?
We have already interviewed.
You've already interviewed him, okay.
If, if there's anything else, I'd be happy, you know? We were, we were very happy to have the applicant step forward and look forward to having a full board again.
Sounds great. All right, so, uh, this is a joint, a joint vote from the planning board and the select board. So I would entertain a motion regarding the application of, uh, Tim Wilsmer to the planning board until the next town election would be third Saturday in May.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any final comments or discussion? Otherwise, let's do a, I'll do a roll call of ours, and then you can do a roll call of yours. Mr. Allison, your board. So Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
An eye for myself.
And should I ask for a motion, or should I just?
No, no, the motion's been made jointly, so, so.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
An eye for myself? There's three ayes?
So that is unanimous with everybody here, so eight, zero, zero. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Your next stop would be as soon as you can to go to the town clerk to get sworn in, and then get your email address set up and join the meetings.
Sounds good.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much again for volunteering.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll close our meeting at, oh, a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second, moving second, uh, at 7:37.
We will close our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, any interviews, appointments, or reappointments, resignations?
None.
All right, we're staying even this week, that's good. Actually, we just went up one, so that's good. Town manager report.
I'll start with announcement of existing vacancies, and just removed one, so shortens the list. We have 11 vacancies on the 300th anniversary committee. Um, on the agenda next week will be an interview of two people. Council on Aging, there are two vacancies. Finance Committee, there are two vacancies. The Green Communities Committee, there are two associate vacancies. The Historical Commission, there are two vacancies. The Open Space Committee, there's one member-at-large vacancy, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has one associate vacancy. Anyone interested can fill out an application that can be found on the town website and send that to the select board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities of these positions, you can contact our office at 970-582-4130, extension 144. For current employment opportunities for the town, we currently have the following openings: an administrative assistant for IT, heavy equipment operator, facilities director, public safety desk clerk, library assistant, library page, police officer, production technician for public access, the recreation director position, and public access videographers. And information can be found on these openings on the town website as well, under employment, and you can find out how to apply there. An update on facilities and parks. Since Paul's last day, um, which was the, prior to Thanksgiving, I've been handling all the day-to-day oversight issues for our facilities and parks, including the fall cleanup of our facilities and grounds, correspondence with Ray Dunnitt's on the 30th School Street project, correspondence with the contractor and architect in the public safety building, Chiller Project, approving certain sprinkler system repairs at buildings, working with the Council on Aging Director and McCarty Engineering on the ADA Patio Project. Any follow-up needed on the facilities and grounds capital requests that are before the Capital Planning Committee, reviewing and approving invoices to be processed, corresponding with money tech on the Ritter Break Room Project, daily meetings with our interim facility superintendent and corresponding with, and meeting with the Parks Commission Chair on a variety of parks-related items. The assistant town manager is handling the assignment of work orders through our, um, facilities management software, e-Mate, so that's being handled, and as those are completed, the, um, interim facility superintendent, um, puts that back in the system. The assistant town manager and I have also been conducting interviews for the facilities director position and have conducted interviews for the recreation director position as well, so as not to lose potentially any good candidates. Update on Flat Hill Road drainage study. As part of the next steps after receiving the drainage study report from McCarty Engineering, Brian Marchetti, the land use director, the DPW director, and I met with one of the trustees of the Village at Flat Hill Association and a couple of their association members. Brian reviewed the findings in the report and discussed the recommendations raised in the report that would be on the property of the Village at Flat Hill. The trustees are currently seeking advice and possible bids from contractors on what steps to take in the near and longer term.
Mr. Chair, I have a question to the town manager. Um, on, on this, we received an email from a resident just inquiring about what actions, if any, are expected by the, uh, by the Village at Flat Hill Association. Uh, can you speak to that?
That was, that's what I just reported. That's what I responded to the resident as well.
Okay, uh, so you're saying there weren't any action, actions?
Correct.
That are required, or are expected by the, uh, association?
They are seeking advice and bids from contractors for anything related to what was brought up in that finding, this report. That's the extent of what I have to offer. Next?
Yep.
Okay. Invitation for bids and request for proposals. Uh, we received bids for the alterations to the Town Beach Building on December 1st and are currently reviewing those, as well as if there are sufficient funds available for that, um, prepare. The request for proposals for the master plan, this will be advertised starting next week, and bids will be due in January of 2023. And, um, as noted earlier, I've been working with Ray Dunnitt's on the 30th School Street project. Um, we should have that bid specification package at the beginning of next week, and then the plan is still to advertise in January. Just a couple of employee highlights I want to make everyone aware of. Um, there was a great article in the November 18th ledger on the Elder Connect Program that is a collaboration between the Council on Aging Director, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief. And this program is a resource to assist the police and fire departments when responding to emergencies involving elders, that they would have that vital information about that individual. Um, I thought this was a great example of how collaboration between departments and how it helps everyone in our community as well. I also received an email from a resident recently about the DPW director's excellent service and responsiveness to residents. This resident contacted him on three different occasions about different issues, and Bill responded immediately. One of the issues were, was replacing the Mulpus Road street sign, which had been damaged and lost, and this past spring, she contacted him regarding the breakdown of the pavement on Mulpus Road, and the potholes were filled within a few weeks, so. She wanted to make that known, um.
That's great. It's always wonderful to get positive feedback.
Yes. In, um, the way of grants, the town was notified, we received the recycling dividends grant under the DEP's Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. We received seven thousand, eight hundred dollars based on our efforts to reduce waste and increase recycling, and this is a grant we receive annually. In announcements and meetings and events, the Giving Tree is currently up at the town hall for anyone that wishes to take a tag that has a child's, uh, information on it with what they're looking for, for presents for Christmas, and you, those items can be donated and returned to the town hall by this coming Monday, December 12th, um, if they can be returned unwrapped. And any donations would be appreciated. The Zoning Board of Appeals will be having the next hearing on Pondview Commons, the 40B comprehensive permit application on December 14th at 7:00 PM in the town hall meeting room. That's all my updates for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. One thing I wanted to, I, I forgot during the announcements in the beginning, but there was, there was mention of an article, and there was mention of the, the Giving Tree. I wanted to thank everybody who made the tree lighting possible, all the volunteers from the, the Lions Club and the high school band, and the high school band director, uh, Ms. Wardwell, and the two chiefs for, and the DPW for preparing the gazebo. It was a great event. Uh, it was an honor to, you know, emcee it, and all the volunteers who decorated the, the center of town too. So there was an article in the Sentinel about that, a brief article about that lighting and about the decorations, and it really rings in the, the season well. So I want to thank everybody who participated in that and made that, uh, possible. Old business, uh, number two, review the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and the funding requests, the evaluation criteria, and the process.
So, Mr. Chair, this is on me to present tonight. I have to ask the board to, uh, have this next week. I don't think I'm in a position tonight, excuse me, to be able to present this adequately, uh, and speak to it.
Does anybody have any?
I didn't quite hear what Mr. Jeffries said.
He said he's not, he, it's up to him to present this.
Oh.
It was his, in his task list, and he feels that it's, he can't.
He can't adjust this from remotely. Yeah, okay.
Uh, that's fine, we'll, we'll take it up next week. I will say, only because, only because the topic is here, that there was discussion, and I'll reiterate this again next week at our meeting, but there was discussion at the Capital Planning Committee about asking the board to take some action or guidance about what items they may look at listing, because it may influence, obviously, the capital planning. Some of the things on the capital planning requests are also on the ARPA requests, and some of them, and I'll explicitly choose one, which was the, the replacement rescue, the replacement ambulance, which was noted that given that vehicle's orders placed today are a year or so out, it may be in our best interest as a town to use that money and get a six-month or a seven-month head start on that funding. I bring that to you, that was discussed, we did not have a vote on it, but it was discussed at, at significant length. So we'll bring that up next week, but I wanted to reiterate it to everybody on the board and, and out in the audience as, uh, aware of that discussion.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was, it was kind of my intent not to interfere with the capital planning process. Um, I think I kind of had the expectation that we were going to kind of roll out the criteria. Um, we got the request in September, but I think I had the expectation that we're going to roll out these criteria in January after the capital planning process is mostly finalized. But I certainly, um, understand, yeah, the concern, which is that when you have that kind of large ticket item, that I think, I think that request was like eight hundred thousand dollars, that that has a significant impact on the overall capital plan, uh, so I do understand that.
Yeah, we, we didn't, just to be clear, we didn't have the discussion about that we couldn't, or could, could or could not fund it. It was more of a timing issue that with the, with the select board having the money at hand, since it is highly likely that the, the ambulance would be funded, it was just merely to get a head start of seven months on a vehicle that we think we're going to approve and is just not to delay it another seven months to even place the order. That's, so, we are still going ahead with our work, and, and when we get to committee reports, I'll give you a, a fuller report of it, but, thank you for hearing that, and we will just address the ARPA funding next week.
Do have, um, one update, uh, regarding one of the projects, um, as far as project costs that is being requested for the ADA Patio for, um, additional funds, um, all included, and, um, the Council on Aging Director, to our credit, has been working hard to trim that project as much as possible, knowing that it has, um, exceeded our original estimate. So eighty thousand of additional funds would be needed, and that would be, um, all-inclusive of, of additional engineering costs and the construction, uh, start to finish.
So that will be on the list, I guess, updated?
Yes.
For next week, okay. Okay, let's go to current business. We have special town meeting recap. It was so much fun, let's. It was so much fun. Let's relive it tonight.
What are we recapping?
I guess just what, I don't know. I guess it was just, it was, this is our first meeting since, since the special town meeting. So if anybody wanted to comment on anything that happened that evening, I, I don't know that anything unexpected happened.
Just the windows. So now the window process with the APDC, right? We have, did you refile already?
Um, no, because we would have to, one, alter our whole bid specifications. So because our architects retired, that means securing another architect to update those, that bid specifications. It's just, you know, an expansion of the number of windows beyond what was originally submitted. And we did provide them the costs prior to town meeting. And I haven't heard back from them about their next meeting date. And I was looking for a couple other items from them as far as meeting minutes that would help inform me in filling information out. But it would be a new application.
Just for the windows or for everything?
No, for the whole project.
Okay. Well, if we, I mean, but I, I mentioned at the beginning when this was denied that we could just take the windows out and then just go with that approval and then just reapply for the windows. I mean, it seems to be a shorter process to do that. They've already approved everything except the windows.
It's pretty connected though, the work to be done.
I understand that. Okay, so I guess it doesn't really matter one way or another. Either way, it's going to be a review, but we should get that in and we should ask them directly what they're expecting so we have a final package as soon as we can to get this resolved.
But it's not a review, right? It's a reapplication. Is that correct? So then the 90 days is attached to it, once you finally get it all submitted.
They have said publicly that it is their intention that they will get it through much faster.
Let's.
But yes, officially, you're correct. So we should find out from them before their meeting what we need to apply so we can have it applied.
Yeah, I prefer that we apply as soon as possible. Because I think the way that, the way that this was phrased by the board members, by some of, you know, you, my colleagues at town meeting was that, you know, we were asking for a nuclear option and that there's a process in place that needs to play itself out. So I think that that was kind of leading to my question, which is what is the process that's in place that needs to play itself out?
Yeah, well, from, I mean, I don't want to speak for them. They said that, that they didn't have, certain members said that they didn't have the information they needed to weigh the difference between replacement or restoration. I don't know that we have that number now, but I think we do, because that was what was provided to us that day of the special town. There was extra information given at special town meeting. So we should ask them in a correspondence, is this enough? Do you have enough for us to resubmit this? Because that's what our intent is, obviously. I don't want both sides to say, well, I'm waiting for you. I'm waiting for you. We should be proactive and say, what do we need to submit so you consider this a new application?
Should we ask them to meet with us since at the special town meeting, they'd, they'd really heavily focused on the non-binding review and the necessity of it? Should we ask them to meet with us prior to the resubmital?
That's fine with me. I like that. I'm fine with that.
So long as it can happen like next week or the week after.
Well, we don't, are we having a meeting? That's a good question. So are we having a meeting on the week before Christmas?
The 20th. It's on the calendar.
The 20th, is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on here.
Okay, so can we invite them?
Yep.
And the, the whole goal, I want to make sure the agenda is clear. The whole goal is I want to know what they need that constitutes a complete application, including the reevaluation of the windows.
Just so, some follow-up on other things. Some of the things that were brought up about articles being deferred as far as recommendations, I would say before next town meeting, even though, you know, what's printed in the warrant, we may not have all the information at that time. There were certain articles that we did have all the information prior to town meeting that the board could have taken votes at one of their meetings. And that would just be announced rather than having that whole discussion on the town meeting floor.
Yep.
I think that would have saved some time on a couple of things.
Yeah, if I can speak to that as well, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, one of my, thank you, Town Manager Heather, for bringing that up. That was, that was kind of my key takeaway, I think, from, from the meeting in terms of the select board. I really think that we probably should have had a meeting prior, you know, the same, it could have been the same day, but maybe half an hour earlier to make recommendations. It seemed as if that really added to the time. And I, and I would, so I think that there's probably an opportunity going forward to perhaps meet, like I said, the same day, a couple minutes before, just to see if we can iron out those recommendations. And the second point is as we go forward that perhaps, and this is something I think I thought of in my, you know, as chair afterwards, is I think there probably should be some limits on how much time we speak about our recommendations at town meeting. That if we're not able to make them in advance, we may want to give ourselves a kind of a maximum five-minute time limit. So that way we're not significantly elongating the meeting to come up with a recommendation.
If I may, I would say historically, there used to be, the selectmen used to meet like a half an hour before a town meeting to take any votes that weren't taken, that we wanted, that we wanted to take to avoid that. I think the two that, that lengthened the meeting, the ones that, that were significant amounts of time, I don't know that we wouldn't have come up with that anyway, because I don't know. We, part of what we discussed was we wanted to hear the presentations that were made. So be hard to come up with a vote if you say you want to hear the presentations. But I hear you. I mean, as many as we can beforehand would be easy. The simple ones only take like, you know, a minute, so.
Overall, though, I thought the town meeting went well. I liked the clickers. I thought that helped expedite the process. It was a really good turnout and a lot of people stayed pretty late. You know, I thought it was a pretty, very good town meeting. I think 14 of the 15 votes went the way I hoped. So I think that was successful.
I, I would concur with you. I think it was well done and I think there was very few glitches and people were respectful and they had good things to say and stayed on point for the most part. Very, very rarely did anybody stray from them. And yeah, I agree with you. It was, you know, four hours is, I think, expected, especially for the length that the warrant was. Anybody else have anything for the special time meeting recap?
I, I just had, just to go back to the APDC, just, just quickly. When we do meet with them, one of the things I'd like them to address is there have been other renovations recently in the center of town. The former Dragonfly Cafe just had replacement windows there. And I'm interested to see if they were held to the same standard that they're holding the Ritter Building to in terms of having, restoring the windows in that facility or were they just replaced with, with modern windows?
Yep, I agree. I know that a prior member of this board was, was their architect, so we can certainly ask.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Jeffrey, is anything else on the recap from your end?
No, no, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Annual license renewals. All right. Let's save that to last. Committee reports, let's do committee reports first.
I think there might have been a school committee meeting, but I did not attend it because I was away.
Okay.
And I didn't watch it because I.
Well, to say that is a committee report that you're not giving is like, you just say no report.
So I'm, no report here.
I have two reports. I don't remember if I reported on our last Stormwater Task Force meeting. We had a brief meeting in November, just went over priorities and what we want to tackle for the new year. And our next meeting will be in January for that, the task force. And then I also attended the meeting at the Lunenburg Water District that was here. I believe it was last Wednesday afternoon. I think it was a productive meeting. I think there was a good discussion between all parties. The engineering firm, Tyne Bond, was here as well as their consulting hydrogeologist to answer some of the concerns that the stakeholder or the Hickory Hills Lake Association had. As people may know, the proposal is to do a pilot study to evaluate removal of iron manganese and PFAS from the water that's pumped from the Lunenburg Water District well, which is located near the, adjacent to Hickory Hills Lake. And residents there, obviously, because of the proximity of that well, are very concerned because when they pump any water there during this testing, the majority of the water goes back into the lake. And they're worried about water quality. They also have some long-term concerns on pumping, if it could affect lake levels. The hydrogeologist was there and was able to address those, but I, I believe there are still some concerns. You could tell that some of the residents may not have been entirely satisfied by the answers of, of the experts. But I think the Water District has been working. I've been following correspondence with the residents since the meeting. I think they've been working to try and provide as much information as they can based on what was requested at the meeting from the area residents. And I, I think they're having a productive, they're productively moving forward. So the next step is the Tyne Bond. They're going to finalize their proposals for the pilot study. That pilot study, what it does, it involves long-term pumping of water and, and into different media that filters out the, these different, the iron manganese and PFAS. Yeah, so they evaluate different media and that helps them design whatever they need for a treatment system that would eventually be constructed.
It was my recollection of when they met with us in, in this board before they had their special Water District meeting. And then when I attended the Water District meeting as a, as a Water customer, that they had committed, at least publicly, they stated that they were going to investigate the impact of the operation of the well on lake levels.
Yes.
Did they acknowledge that? Because my understanding at that meeting is that they said they weren't going to do that now.
So based on that meeting, what the information they can get is more of a baseline lake level. They can't determine what the pumping at the production rate of that well will do until it occurs. So that is not a question. They can get a baseline for, for what the levels are in the lake, but they cannot answer the next question is if it's going to affect it. However, the hydrogeologist, I, I agree with his explanation personally that the lake levels will be unaffected by the pumping based on, on what he presented and my, my own professional knowledge of geology, being a technical engineer. However, I think they have more to do because, let me back up. When they initially permitted that well, a pump test was done and they operated that well for, for quite some time. And I believe they only had one, possibly two seasons that they ever got any complaints of wells. So wells not functioning properly, personal wells. So I think the Water District is going to continue to provide data to help answer those questions. I personally don't think it's a concern. And the, my impression of the hydrogeologist was, he was a little, I think he was a little surprised by, by the questions because he was giving an explanation and, and people didn't seem to believe his explanation. So I think he was a bit frustrated at the time. He's like, I'm the expert. I'm telling you. And they're like, well, how do you know? And he's like, well, this is what I do. So, you know, I, I think it's a work in progress. And I think the, it appears that the Water District's doing everything they can, everything they can to try and answer these questions to the best of their ability.
Okay. I think the, the people who, I, I haven't seen the full meeting. I've only gotten through half of it. But I think they point to another study when the well was closed where a section of there indicated that there was, there's a possibility that it was affecting it. Again, I'm not a geologist. I appreciate your.
So, so in, in the study they pointed to, the hydrogeologist actually, they had pointed that out to him. And he had gone back and read before the meeting that section and he brought it with him. And he goes, I understand what you're saying from this one sentence, but you have to read the entire thing in context. And, and he tried to put it in context. I.
Okay, fair enough.
I, how it was received, I do, I could tell just some people were not entirely satisfied. So I, I think it's, it's still a work in progress, but I, I think they're making productive, productively moving forward.
I'm very glad you're on that, that you're, you're our liaison on that. So thank you. Mr. Franklin?
I have none. I only have one. We've had a couple of capital planning committee meetings since our last meeting of this board. And we are now, we just met, in fact, Monday, yesterday, where we started the ranking of the 30 requests. And we are waiting for one member who was unfortunately ill last night and could not attend, so we're waiting for his ranking. We're hoping that next Wednesday is the final meeting. We will have another one if it's needed, but we hope to have the rankings done after reviewing all the presentations, having really good, solid discussions amongst the committee members and with the town manager and getting answers from the various departments on, on certain items that they put in requests for. So we are on track to, for, on the 14th, next week, on Wednesday, the 14th, to have a final list to the town manager. I also know that the town manager reported two vacancies in the finance committee. We did receive a talent bank form for a member who wants to be on the finance committee. And Elaine Peterson, our executive assistant here at, at Town Hall for the town manager and the select board, has sent it out to the finance committee appointing committee, hopefully to have a meeting, an interview with that applicant next Tuesday before this meeting. So we're hoping that that will happen.
Mr. Jeffrey?
I'll, I'll, yep, thank you. I was going to jump right in there.
All right, good. I like it.
So you, you mentioned you're from a big family, so I'm the, I'm the youngest though of six, so I always had to wait my turn. You know, one, one thing, so the municipal building design committee meets in two weeks on, I believe it's the 19th. And then the other update, I'm not sure where this fits, so I'll just say it now. I do communicate pretty frequently. I know the town manager, the town manager is our primary liaison or communicator with our state delegation, Senator Cronin and Representative Kuschemerik and, and Representative Sina formally. So, you know, I also keep in touch with Senator Cronin and Representative Kuschemerik because there are other issues, you know, kind of unrelated, I wouldn't say unrelated, but that are not directly related to my role as a selectman, that are things that I do care about. And so we do discuss, we do reach out. So the update is just that in our, in a conversation between Senator Cronin and I, about a week ago, we were talking about the Pathways Program. And this is a program that Senator Cronin really expanded upon in his freshman year. And they funded $600,000 for this. So what this does is, as we know, right now, we're having a skills gap in the marketplace where we have a lot of, a lot of students coming out of high school that are college-focused. And you have the kids that, that go into like Monty Tech and other trade schools that gives them kind of a leg up into going into trades, you know. But then you have the kids who are also in a traditional school, such as Lunenburg, other school systems, where, where the academic path probably isn't for them in terms of college, but, you know, they're kind of too late or ineligible for whatever reason to get into the, to get into the trade school. And so what this Pathways Program does is it, is it helps create an opportunity for, for students to kind of get those direct pipelines for training into certain careers. And so this is something that, again, Senator Cronin has really taken this on as his project, really supported by Representative Kuschemerik throughout the district. And the good news is that in the funding for this year, that program has expanded to, I believe, $5 million from the $600,000. So one of the things that I, that I've done this week is reached out to the superintendent and the superintendent's office, the chair of the school. and the superintendent's office, the chair of the school committee, to try to coordinate a meeting between Senator Cronin, Representative Kuschemerik, myself and the chair of the school committee to really discuss this pathways program and try to identify any opportunities for there to be some synergy. My expectation is that beyond this first meeting, I'm likely not going to be involved. You know, but it is something that, you know, I care personally deeply about and I certainly think that there's a benefit here to the, to the district. There could be, to the town and the residents here in our community. So we're hoping to get this scheduled. We're trying to target next week. It's looking though like it might not happen until sometime in January.
Thank you. I will say that from the capital planning committee to your, to the municipal building design and the use committee, that one of the things we've also had a discussion about that I thought I should probably bring forward here is as we do our rankings, it's a difficult, you know, it's difficult to, there are some items that are requests for some buildings that are part of your study, TC Passios, Brooks House, Town Hall, Ritter Building. And without, without the full picture, and I realize this is premature, but I just figured I'd share it, that without the full picture of what buildings are being proposed to be reused and you, and of course, your committee's going to have options and not knowing which one town meeting will choose, et cetera, it does increase our, or increases the difficulty of rating and ranking projects from the Vertex Report about those buildings, especially ones like Brooks House, which is, has limited use now. Ritter Building and Town Hall are a lot easier. TC Passios is still kind of easy because it's still being used, but Brooks House is only like one occupant right now. And so anything that you might be able to help us with, it may not matter because your committee's going to be done well after hours, but I did figure I'd share that with you that this was a big discussion amongst the capital planning committee members.
All right. Yeah. Unfortunately, Mr. Alonso, I don't, I can't offer too much more. I think that as a whole, the municipal building design committee has very lowly prioritized the Brooks House. It's almost seen in many ways as being waste. I think that in the majority of the scenarios, the proposal is to demolish or some kind of minimal use. I think we understand that there's interest on APDC and on the school committee for that building to be, you know, actively utilized. So, you know, I think that when we meet on the 19th, we'll be able to discuss that in more detail. I hope to be able to give a better update on the 20th.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We've avoided it long enough. The annual parade of license renewals. All right. I don't need those. So license renewals, what we have usually, it looks like they're already broken down. Is there any item we should look at first here? The memorandum?
I would say you can do the auto dealer common vehicle miscellaneous one and entertainment and wait for the liquor licenses in the end.
What, until next week?
No, no, no. Meaning till.
Oh, no. But should we read this memorandum first of regarding license renewals?
That was, it's basically the liquor licenses.
So from Elaine Peterson to the board and to the town manager, she has indicated, she's the one who chases all these renewals and sends out the renewal forms. So this is our first round of annual license renewals. All that are listed have submitted required paperwork and paid their application fees, all the people that are on the list now. All taxes and municipal fees, if applicable, are current. The alcohol licensees have submitted their applications and for the Section 12, which is the on-premises alcohol licenses, they have provided the required proof of liquor liability and the Department of Revenue certificates of good standing. Only two alcohol licenses have not met the requirements and they have been notified of a hearing date two weeks from tonight via email and certified mail of their deficiencies. So they are lacking certain inspections and certain certificates that they need and they have been notified. They have been informed that if they provide the required items before the hearing date of December 20th, which is our last meeting of the year, their hearing will be canceled. So, and then all Class II auto dealers have provided proof of $25,000 bond or a line of sufficient credit to cover the acquired amount of $25,000. So basically everybody we're going to be going over here has fulfilled all the requirements. So let's leave the alcohol licenses alone. And what did you say to do first? It doesn't matter.
All the rest.
Okay. All right. So let's go from the bottom of our list up. Weekly entertainment license renewals. And they are for Ilforno Lunenburg Bar, Inc., doing business as Ilforno Restaurant and Catering at 494 Electric Ave. Smokestack Roasters LLC, doing business as Smokestack Roasters on 39 Massachusetts Ave. And Lunenburg Zetas, Inc., doing business as Bad Larry's at 1 Main Street, number four. So after I complete these, I would enter to, instead of me asking, somebody please move however you want to move the motion.
I move to approve the 2023 weekday entertainment licenses as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right. We're rolling. Miscellaneous license renewals. So we have two amusement, automatic amusement devices licenses for 449 Corporation, doing business as Lakeview Club at 449 Whalem Road. They have a license for four automatic amusement devices. And we have Carol A. and Henry A. Baker at Baker's Whalem Variety at 423 Electric Avenue that have three automatic amusement devices. 449 Corporation, doing business as Lakeview Club at 449 Whalem Road, has a jukebox license, my favorite of all. American Graffiti, Inc., doing business as American Graffiti at 113 Summer Street, a jukebox license. Lunenburg Zetas, Inc., doing business as Bad Larry's, 1 Main Street, number four, jukebox license, jukebox license. JK Waterfront, Inc., doing business as On the Rocks, 96 Lakefront Ave, for a jukebox license. Mark Testa, doing business as Lakeview Golf Driving Range at 15 Car Avenue, is a base license. First Choice Limousine and Transportation Service, Inc., doing business as First Choice Limousine at 555 Chase Road, for a limousine license. And Thomas L. Krauns, doing business as Lloyd's Limousine Service, PO Box 502, also for a limousine license.
I have a question on Thomas Krauns.
On what?
On Lloyd's Limousine Service.
Yes.
Is it, I don't recall ever seeing a PO Box previously. I thought we needed a physical address. Because we're authorizing it to happen at a place, right?
I think it's a service. I don't know that it necessarily has to, it's not like people go there. They go and pick up people.
Yeah. But I mean, as far as their business location though, I mean.
Yeah. I guess.
How they even in Lunenburg? That's a PO Box. That doesn't.
I don't know the answer to the question. Do we know? Do we have last year's?
I can look back in last year's renewals.
Yep. I'll raise you.
It's not under miscellaneous. Limousine, here we go. What's the name of, I'm sorry?
Lloyd's.
Yeah. It had a PO Box.
It had a PO Box last year, too.
It would be possible to just get a physical address. I'm not, I don't, it's not going to hold me up tonight, but it would be hopeful, I think, if we knew where the business was at.
We can ask. I don't know if it's, you know, again, I don't know if it's an actual requirement, but we can ask, sir.
I guess, I guess the question is, would it be appropriate, and I don't know the answer to this, would it be appropriate for a resident to operate a business such as a limousine service out of their residence?
Yeah.
I think if the answer to that is no.
We'll have to look into that.
We'll have to look into it. Nobody here is going to be able to answer that.
Okay.
Okay. So there we have the miscellaneous license renewals that I read.
I'll do the motion, but we, we decided that we are just going to let that one go as.
Yeah, because it was last year, too.
Okay. That's fine. I move to grant, accept, or approve rather, the 2023 miscellaneous license renewals as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Okay. Let's go up to the common victor, common vittle, vitler license, actually. I've learned that this year. That's how you say that, vitler. So, 449 Corporation, doing business as the Lakeview Club, 449 Whalem Road. Ian Corporation, doing business as Hilltop Farms, 1 Main Street. Alan Souza, doing business as Stella's Coffee Shop, 466 Electric Avenue. American Graffiti, Inc., doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street. Carol A. and Henry A. Baker, doing business as Baker's Whalem Variety, 423 Electric Avenue. Embers Lounge and Restaurant LLC, doing business as Embers Pizzeria, 84 Lakefront Street. Global Montello Group Corporation, doing business as Honey Farms, number 3829, at 134 Lemonster Shirley Road. Ilforno Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Ilforno Restaurant and Catering, 494 Electric Avenue. JK Waterfront, Inc., doing business as On the Rocks, 96 Lakefront Avenue. JD Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Shady Point Beach and Campgrounds, 701 Reservoir Road. Zhang Junlu, Inc., doing business as Asian Imperial at 5 Electric Avenue. KCM Donuts, Inc., doing business as Dunkin' Donuts at 451 Massachusetts Ave. KCM Donuts, Inc., doing business as Dunkin' Donuts at 400 Electric Avenue. Lanny Orchards, Inc., doing business as Lanny Orchards, 294 Chase Road. Lunenburg Gas and Market LLC, doing business as Lunenburg Gas and Market, 400 Electric Avenue. Lunenburg Zetas, Inc., doing business as Bad Larry's at 1 Main Street, number four. Melendez Magano, Inc., doing business as Darius at 310 Massachusetts Ave. Neshoba Valley Donuts LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, 134 Lemonster Shirley Road. Presto Pizza, Inc., doing business as Presto Pizza, 429 Electric Avenue. Red Pepper, Inc., doing business as Ixtapa Cantina, 308 Massachusetts Avenue. Settlers Crossing Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Settlers Pub, 994 Northfield Road. Smokestack Roasters LLC, doing business as Smokestack Roasters, 39 Massachusetts Avenue. Victory Distributors LLC, doing business as Hannaford Supermarket and Pharmacy, number 838? It looks like it's cut off, but 333 Massachusetts Avenue. White Farm Limited, doing business as Cherry Hill Ice Cream, 826 Lemonster Road. And Yatim Central Convenience Lunenburg, doing business as Lunenburg Golf, 451 Mass Ave. Motion, please.
Move to approve the 2023 common victor, vict, however you say that, license.
Vittlers.
Vittlers. Vittlers license renewals as read.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Auto dealer license renewals. Okay. For Class 1 auto dealer licenses, we have Colonial Imports, Inc., doing business as North End Subaru. Colonial Imports West, Inc., doing business as North End Mazda, oh, North End Subaru's 757 Chase Road, I apologize. Colonial Imports West, Inc., doing business as North End Mazda, 747 Chase Road. Recreational Dimensions, Inc., doing business as Central Mass Power Sports at 19 Massachusetts Avenue. Joe Smalley Auto Sales, Inc., doing business as Di Wu North, 30 Summer Street. Class 2 licenses, Carol and Henry Baker, doing business as Baker's Towing, 421 Electric Avenue. KB Agaien, doing business as KB Cars LLC, at 555 Chase Road. Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr., doing business as Lunenburg Auto Center, 36 Summer Street. Mass Ave Motors, Inc., doing business as Mass Ave Motors, Inc., at 381 Massachusetts Avenue. John V. Gogan, doing business as JG Service, at 346 Electric Avenue. Colonial Imports, Inc., doing business as North End Subaru, 44 Chase Road. Robert C. and Michael Lovewell, doing business as RC Motors, at 9 Kirby Ave and at 480 Electric Ave. Baker Enterprises Company, Inc., doing business as the Autobarn, Barn, at 53 Chase Road. Michael Bartonowski, doing business as KC Sales and Services LLC, at 1312 Massachusetts Ave. Again, Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr., doing business as Maxi Auto, Inc., at 40 Summer Street. Chaplain Auto Center, Inc., doing business as Chaplain Truck Center, Inc., at 199 Massachusetts Avenue. Joe Smalley Auto Sales, Inc., doing business as Di Wu North, at 30 Summer Street. And a Class 3 auto dealer license, Michael Ara Chaplain, doing business as Chaplain Auto Salvage, at 199 Mass Ave. Motion.
I move to approve the 2023 auto dealer licenses for classes 1 through 3 as read.
Second. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And that leaves us with one. Let me just check something here. There were reports, for the next one, there was a report given by the police chief on any incidents at places. Has the board read those? Okay. So, alcohol renewals. 449 Corporation, doing business as Lakeview Club, 449 Whalem Road, a general on-premises all alcohol license. Ian Corporation, doing business as Hilltop Farms, 1 Main Street, package store, wine and malt. American Graffiti, Inc., doing business as American Graffiti, 113 Summer Street, restaurant all alcohol. Central Mass Gardens Center, doing business as Central Mass Gardens, 621 Chase Road, package store, wine and malt license. Elena's Gourmet Grocery, Inc., doing business as Elena's Gourmet Grocery, 1 Main Street, number 8, package store, all alcohol. Embers Lounge and Restaurant LLC, doing business as Embers Pizzeria, at 84 Lakefront Drive, restaurant all alcohol. Genghis, Inc., doing business as Jack's Country Variety, at 1353 Massachusetts Ave, package store, all alcohol. Global Montello Group Corporation, doing business as Honey Farms, number 3829, at 134 Lemonster Shirley Road, package store, wine and malt. Ilforno Lunenburg Bar, Inc., doing business as Ilforno Lunenburg Bar, 494 Electric Ave, restaurant all alcohol. Zhang Junlu, Asian Imperial, doing business as Asian Imperial, at 5 Electric Ave, restaurant all alcohol. JK Waterfront, Inc., doing business as On the Rocks, 96 Lakefront Drive, restaurant all alcohol. Lanny Orchards, Inc., doing business as Lanny Orchards, 294 Chase Road, package store, wine and malt. Lunenburg Zetas, Inc., doing business as Bad Larry's, 1 Main Street, number four, restaurant all alcohol. Melendez Magano, doing business as Darius, 310 Massachusetts Avenue, restaurant all alcohol. Red Pepper, Inc., doing business as Ixtapa Cantina, 308 Massachusetts Ave, restaurant all alcohol. Saruza's LLC, doing business as Lunenburg Liquors, 433 Electric Ave, package store, all alcohol. Settlers Crossing Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Settlers Pub, 994 Northfield Road. Road, general on-premises, all alcohol. Smokestack Roasters, LLC, doing business as Smokestack Roasters, thirty-nine Massachusetts Ave, restaurant, wine and malt. Victory Distributors, LLC, doing business as Hanaford Supermarkets and Pharmacy, Number eight three eight eight, thirty, three thirty-three Massachusetts Avenue, package store, all alcohol. And lastly, Ilforno Lunenburg Bar, Inc., doing business as Ilforno at four ninety-four Electric Ave, restaurant, all alcohol. Isn't that there twice?
Yeah, but is that because they have that new building that they're gonna add?
No.
Or is it just...
I think that was inadvertently put there twice. It's the same, same corporation doing, I mean, I guess, there's one as a bar, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, same address, wow.
Before we move in this, I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
If we can just go back to Chief Gammel's letter.
Yep.
In one C, he makes note about on September the tenth, there being an incident in which a suspect was underage, nineteen years old. I'd like to get clarification on this, because I guess my question is, with On the Rocks being a bar, it was my understanding that they only allow in people who are twenty-one years of age. So, why is a nineteen-year-old at a bar? So, I'd like to get some clarification on if that, and in their note, it says that it was found that prior to the incident, the victim was described as going from zero sixty, which was interpreted as the victim acting normal to being highly intoxicated. My question is not about the, was about the suspect who was engaged in this assault and battery, if that person was perceived as being intoxicated as well. I'd like to get some clarification on that.
Okay, so you're asking for that to be held up? Are we looking for that to be held up? All right, so we will...
Yeah, I prefer for that to be held until next week, if possible. And I apologize for not reaching out to the chief.
Which establishment is that?
On the Rocks.
On the Rocks.
All right, so we're gonna remove, at the request of the chair, we will remove for consideration for tonight JK Waterfront, Inc., doing business on the rocks for ninety-six Lakefront Drive, for a restaurant, all alcohol. So, consider that removed from my listing. That's number twelve on your chart. So, we'll take that up next week.
Thank you.
And can we get clarification? Okay, so, I would entertain a motion on all the other applicants.
I move to renew the alcohol licenses as presented with the omission noted for JK Waterfront, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. I think that is everything, right? Okay. Not so bad. All right, now we have to have the signing party, so don't, we have to sign all these. Mr. Jeffries gets to sign these next week.
Yeah, I'll come in, I'll come in this weekend.
All right, good. All right, so that's the agenda. We have, our next meeting is next Tuesday, December thirteenth, and then we have a meeting scheduled for December twentieth. Any public comment from the town manager?
No public comment. I'm just reading this report.
Any public comment from the public? No. Any public comment from the board?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Jeffries.
I just wanna thank you, Mr. Alonso, for a couple of things. The first is for chairing tonight's meeting, and second, for standing in for me last week at the tree lining ceremony, being under weather. I was not able to attend, and you never hesitate to step up when I'm, when I'm unable. And then also, Tom, for, you know, sometimes I reach out to you for advice, and, and, you know, and I always appreciate your willingness to offer it, and the thoroughness of the advice that you provide. So, I just wanna thank you, Tom, for your role as vice chair and really being a help, a really helpful guy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and I will say to each of those, it's a pleasure, and anytime I can help. So, thank you. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Yeah.
The only announcement I have is that hopefully we'll see you on the boot drive on Saturday. Hopefully, it won't be raining. If it is raining and you see us out there, please be sympathetic. Otherwise, we will see you here next Tuesday night. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Roca?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Good night, everybody. Take care of yourselves. Take care of each